I'll call the board of commissioners to order for January 27th. And I ask everyone to please rise for the indication to be led by Reverend Scott Rollins from Highland Christian Church. Thank you for being here with us as always.
Let us pray together. Oh God, we pray that you bless the work of our city commission this evening. Remind them of the great calling that they face to represent and to serve all the people of Frankfurt. Guide them in their work so that Frankfurt might be more and more a place of justice and joy and peace for everyone. Give them strength to speak and to act with patience when it's called for and with boldness when necessary. Remind them especially in times of frustration and discouragement that theirs is indeed a noble and wonderful call. God, you know the lives of each of these people here. Remind them of the blessings of their lives and comfort them in their times of concern and sorrow. And God, we especially lift up Tommy Haynes and his family. We pray that you be with him in the loss of his father. And God, for the life we live, we give you all thanks and praise. You are a great God. Amen.
Thank you so much. Please remain standing for... ...to be delivered by... I think it was Commissioner Haynes? To be led back Commissioner Haynes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Roach?
Here.
Mr. Haynes?
Here.
Mr. Bowers?
Here.
Mr. Hayden?
Here.
We do have a quorum present. And just one thing, I just say we want to give our heartfelt love and support to our fellow Commissioner Tommy Haynes on the loss of his father this past week, Thursday. And we know it's tough. Those of us who have gone through that, we can have empathy and love for you and support. And I know that if, when we adjourn today, if someone, when we adjourn, that we do so in loving memory and honor of Tommy Haynes, Tommy's father, Commissioner Haynes' father. Next item would be approval of minutes or any action that would need to be taken on minutes from the December 9 special, December 9 work session.
I move for approval, Mayor.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hayden, second by Commissioner Haynes. Any further discussion? CNN, clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Roach?
Here.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
It might be yes. Yes. Looks like we don't have any scheduled ceremony allowed, but I would just give a special thanks on behalf of all the commissioners and administrative and executive staff at City Government to our tremendous effort that our street department and all those that get out during the cold, cold weather to plow and salt and also to all the folks who have to pick up recyclables and garbage and that type of weather, it's difficult. Special again, thanks to all of our firefighters and EMTs and paramedics who responded to a very cold situation last Wednesday. I guess it would be Wednesday morning, early, in sub-zero weather. And to all the police officers who were there. And again, the street department came out and assisted with efforts there to make sure the streets were not iced over so that firefighters and other emergency responders wouldn't fall on the frozen deal. But thank you all, to everyone in the process who gets out there even when it's freezing cold and below freezing to make sure everything's safe for everybody else. We all, all five of us salute you all and thank you for being part of a great working operation.
Ours are cleaner than yours.
As Commissioner Roach said, ours are always cleaner than other communities. First item under ordinances, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. Let me back up. Citizen comments. And as always, even though we know you, if people don't mind for the record stating their name and what they're going to talk about, you don't have to give your address.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Donna Hecker. I'm president of Walk Bike Frankfurt, and I'm here for two reasons, which I'll make short. First is to thank Mayor May, Commissioner Roach, Mr. Zizov, Mr. Rosa, and anyone else from local government who was able to attend the two Jeff Speck engagements a couple of weeks ago on walkable cities and how to make our community more accessible for pedestrians and thereby making it, I think, a more healthy, wealthy, and nice place, just all around a nice place to live. Second reason I'm here is to just reiterate the support of Walk Bike Frankfurt for a couple of items that I think are on tonight's agenda. One is a budgetary matter dealing with funding of a first phase of a design study, I believe, on the Greening America's Capitals grant, some of the suggestions that were brought forth in that process. The second, and as well, also included in that budgetary consideration, the wayfinding signs that are being considered. Second is to reiterate our support for the resolution relating to the same matter. So just wanted to say thank you all for that and looking forward to anticipated approval of it. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Okay, anyone else? All right. Next item would be first and second reading of ordinances. Item 4.1 is making some changes to Chapter 37 dealing with seasonal employment. And I would ask that first, the resolution be read by title and summary only, then we can take questions from anyone or motion there.
By title, an ordinance amending Chapter 37, Section 37.02 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances. Summary, this ordinance amends Section 37.02 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances to clarify the definition of seasonal employment by stating that seasonal employment can be either full-time or part-time. A seasonal employee may not exceed 1,500 hours worked in a calendar year. A seasonal employee shall not work in more than nine calendar, excuse me, nine months in any fiscal year. An employee with a seasonal classification must take a minimum of three calendar months off each fiscal year, and seasonal employment does not have to be served in consecutive days or weeks.
I move adoption.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Bowers, second by Commissioner Roach. Any other discussion? CNN, clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, item 4.1 is adopted. Next item is 4.2, and this is the first reading dealing with revenue for fiscal year 2013-2014 concerning funds received from KCDC. I'd ask that it be read by title and summary only.
By title, an ordinance amending Ordinance Number 3, 2013 Series Appropriating Revenue to Be Received by the City of Frankfurt for the Fiscal Year 2013-2014. Summary, this ordinance amends the City of Frankfurt Budget for Fiscal Year 2013-2014 to include a loan repayment of $230,000 from SUCIDA doing business as KCDC and identify projects for funding from the repayment. The projects identified are the 2014 American Fire Grant Match of $72,000, Greening America's Capitals Design Engineering, $30,000, Wayfinding Signage Plan, $25,000, Historic Frankfurt Preservation Fund for Grant Loans, $40,000, and Demolition of Five Structures Failing to Adhere to Code Enforcement Board Orders, $60,000. The total amount for identified projects is $227,000.
Thank you so much. So had its first reading. Are there any questions from commissioners? Next item is 4.3. This is dealing with parking regulations in Chapter 72. If we can have title and first reading by title and summary only.
Mr. Beyer, after the meeting before, after the work session meeting, some minor revisions were made to the ordinance, and I have copies of those documents. If I could just review the minor revisions before the first reading, if that's okay?
Is there any objection?
You'll see in Section 72.98, which is the second page of the ordinance, instead of persons responding to a citation within five business days, persons now have 10 calendar days of the date of issuance to either pay the fine set forth in the citation or submit a written request for a hearing. And you'll see throughout paragraph one that we have used 10 calendar days rather than five business days in order to give the person that received the citation more time to respond. And that in paragraph two of Section 72.98, this is not a revision, but just to reiterate that if someone does request a hearing before the parking citations hearing board, the hearing will be held no less than 14 days from the date of the request. And that provides a five-day time period, no less than five-day time period to notify the person requesting the hearing of the time for the hearing, et cetera. And I believe that those were the primary revisions made to the ordinance that we discussed at the work session.
If there's no other questions, we'll ask for first reading by title and summary only.
An ordinance amending Chapter 72 Parking Regulations of the City of Frankfurt, Section 72.25, 72.98, and 72.99 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances. By summary, this amendment provides for the enforcement of the city's parking ordinance, including authorizing the empowerment of vehicles where five outstanding parking citations exist, and the discounting of amounts due on parking citations unless a person has received six or more parking citations in a calendar year, and also sets forth the process to appeal a parking citation and the details of the board hearing the appeals.
Thank you. Any other questions on that?
Yes, I mean, may I just ask a few questions, Mayor?
Of course you can.
I've gotten quite a few emails recently regarding the increased enforcement downtown. One person said that they had their car parked, they got out of their car, they were, said they were out of their car no more than 15 minutes, they came back and they had a ticket on their car from the enforcement going around. Do you, can we just, while we're on cable, can we just get some clarification of how the process works regarding the citations and how they're, are they still striping the car tires?
Should we have Chief Wilhite come forward and answer those questions for you?
As to the question of a parking ticket, of course, in the downtown central business district, it's two-hour parking Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 5:00, except in the zones that are marked 15-minute parking or loading zones or fire hydrants. Those are generally the exceptions and the few handicapped spots that are downtown. If a person receives a parking ticket that they wish to contest, under the current ordinance and under our current practice, they can appeal that ticket by coming by the police station and requesting an appeal. So if that person would like to appeal that ticket, that's fine. But the new parking, the new parking program that we're going to be starting is electronic chalking. So rather than going by with the yellow ticks on the tires, we have a device that will photograph and also take GPS coordinates of each vehicle. And of course, when they, when they exceed their time limit, we print a ticket on the spot. We also have a new records management system which allows the parking enforcement officers to know how many tickets a person has gotten in the previous calendar year. And this will enable us to enforce the ordinance as it was originally written with increasing fines for those with multiple violations throughout the year. So it wouldn't be worth $5 a day to park downtown. After a while, it's going to add up, and they're either going to have to seek refuge in a garage, one of the two garages that we have, or park outside the downtown district.
That's your question.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
Could you? Next item is 4.4, and we read this by, ask that it be read by title and summary only.
This is the first reading, an ordinance reducing the boundaries of the City of Frankfurt. Summary, this ordinance provides that the approximately 5.48 acre uninhabited tract described in the ordinance is DNXed or stricken from the boundaries of the City of Frankfurt.
Okay. Any questions on this one? This is from Buffalo Price. I don't know. Next item would be Resolution 6.1, which is a Greening America's Capitals on this for the second straight quarter. And we've seen some presentations. Is there any questions from commissioners?
I just got one question I asked the last time, and I think I'm pretty clear on it, but just to make sure, and that is, supporting this doesn't mean that some of the changes that we've envisioned that we may have to make or that parts of it that might not work in the future, it doesn't keep us from making those changes. Is that correct?
That's what I understand. Is that correct? I'm sorry.
That's clear.
Okay. You're welcome. Any other questions? No, no, you ready for a motion?
Move for adoption.
Moved by Commissioner Haynes?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bowers. Any discussion? CNN, clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, thank you. Next item is 6.2. This is the resolution that was discussed at the work session regarding the comprehensive immigration reform. I know we have somebody here. Okay. If there's any questions, we can entertain those. If not, any discussion or if you're ready for a motion?
Well, Mayor, I do, I have a, I guess, a comment or a concern. In the third paragraph of that resolution, one, two, three, four lines down where it says "and supports," I would like to be added after the word "supports," parentheses, not necessarily financially, parentheses closed. I had asked Mr. Rosenstein at the work session, was he going to be coming back to us for money? Although I've just verified with the city manager today that we already give the Thornhill Center $32.5,000 a year. He talked about if we were to pass a resolution to this effect, that it would position the Thornhill Center better to receive federal grants. And so I asked the question, do those federal grants not often require local matches? And the response I got was, we will not come back to you for money. And I want that clear over the cable tin to the viewing audience because that was said in the work session. And I would like this resolution to reflect in those parentheses just what I said, not necessarily financially, parentheses closed, doesn't mean that if the city determines down the road it wants to do something financially, it can't, doesn't prohibit that from happening. But I want it very clear that I'm not resolving, I'm not firmly committed to committing my citizens in Frankfurt that taxpayer money to this effort. I heard some arguments from Commissioner Roach in the last meeting that made a lot of sense to me. The federal government hasn't done what the federal government may or may not do yet, so I think this is a little bit premature. I worked at the Thornhill Center myself years ago. They do a great job, so I commend them on the job that they do. They already offer English as a second language. I don't see anything that would prohibit that center from going ahead and putting citizenship classes in place right at this very moment. I don't think there's any prohibition against that. I believe that the federal government needs to do its job, and I believe that the local governments need to do their jobs. And I think oftentimes the federal government leaves some of their work to the local level. And I think this might be a situation where the federal government is hoping that the local level government will do the hard work for it. And I've got mixed emotions on this resolution because I really want to educate everyone that we can, if they're going to pass something in a certain way, I would like to know exactly what's going to be passed before I'm resolving to do something. So I'm not really for or against this. So it's a bit of a difficult dilemma that I'm in. But I would like that sentence there amended. So could I make the motion that that be amended to the third paragraph down, the fourth line down, citizenship, comma, and supports, parentheses, not necessarily financially, parentheses closed, encourages the establishment of a local center for citizenship, providing... And then I would also like to add legal immigrants, legal immigrants. Now, I realize if the federal government does what some people think it will do, those people that we would be educating at Thornhill would be legal immigrants. But the only feedback that I've gotten from the population in Frankfurt on this resolution is, and I haven't gotten a lot of feedback, but the feedback that I have gotten, the questions have pertained to, will this be for legal and/or illegal immigrants? And so it would be for legal immigrants. So I see nothing wrong with putting that in the resolution. And so my motion would be that we add parentheses, not necessarily financially, parentheses closed, and on the last line before adopted on, after the word "providing legal." And so I'll make that motion.
Okay, let's get this written down. Okay, so restating the motion, the motion would be after the word and the fourth line down under the...
Third paragraph down. Now therefore be it resolved in that paragraph, fourth line down, and supports, parentheses, although not necessarily financially, parentheses closed, doesn't prohibit us from providing financial later on if we so determine we want to do that, but it also doesn't lock us in. When I see the word "support," as a city commissioner, I automatically think they want money. We already give $32.5,000, but you know, if we're going to be firmly committed to something, then what does that mean to be supportive of it? So that needs to be clarified, that we're not necessarily locking ourselves into contributing money. I don't want to be contacted five years later for grants and be told that we said we supported years and years ago, I don't know how many years ago exactly, Mayor, I voted no on that library relocation because I said there would be parking issues that would arise and wasn't heard very strongly. And now that situation is back before us, just as I predicted about parking. So I just want to protect us down the road. We have options down the road, but I don't want to lock us into something, and I don't want us to be told that we resolved strongly committed to something, and now we're backing out of our commitment. So I would like this to be as flexible as possible.
Okay, and then the other...
Last line, providing legal immigrants.
Okay. So is there a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Hayden. Okay, any discussion? Commissioner Haynes?
Yes, I don't have a... I'm sorry. You go ahead first, Commissioner. I don't have a problem with the not necessarily financial.
Okay.
And I'm thinking about the immigrants, you know, that's for an opportunity to study for the U.S. Citizenship Test, so they might be working toward that. So I'm not sure if you put the word "legal" in there, how much that, if it stops somebody from trying to be, you know, the citizenship test.
My understanding is if what's being pushed at the federal level actually happens, then we would be creating a pathway for people to become legal that are not now legal. So I think that it would be for legal immigrants anyway. Am I right, Ms. Pettis? But I want...
Let me speak to this. I'm going...
I would like her to.
Okay.
But what I really want, if you could address to the population, to the viewing audiences, I want the viewing audience, I want the citizens to be very comfortable that what we're doing here is what I believe we would be doing.
I'm afraid you'll cut off our legs if you put the word "legal" in there, and for this reason. When we provide education to people for ESL, we don't ask them whether they're legal or not legal.
Okay.
And as Mike stated so aptly during the work session, we don't have a whole lot of illegal people beating down the doors at Thornhill. We want to be positioned, the city and the county, to be able to get grant money. And I think you'll notice in that resolution, we also include the wording according to whatever the federal process is. That's the key. We don't know exactly what the pathway is going to look like, and...
Excuse me, I don't see what you said the wording was...
Isn't there something in there?
It says, whereas the City of Frankfurt recognizes that there may be changes in immigration law at the federal level, maybe, we don't know what that's going to be, whereas the city wants to be prepared if changes in immigration laws lead to the need for individuals in our community to enhance their education, then now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Frankfurt, that the City of Frankfurt Board of Commissioners endorses and encourages the cooperation of public and private sectors to enhance the education of individuals impacted by changes in immigration law, particularly in the areas of communication and citizenship, and supports, parentheses, I hope, although not necessarily financially, parentheses closed, and encourages the establishment of a local center for citizenship, providing, and here's where the word, of legal immigrants an opportunity to study for the U.S. Citizenship Test. Is the push not that we create a path for illegals to become legal so that they would actually be legal when they are studying for this?
We, I thought we had in there, according to the federal process, whatever is set up, I'm afraid that if you put the word "legal" and we apply for a grant, I don't think that the grants coming down in Washington are going to restrict it to just legal or illegal. I don't think they're going to demarcate that way. And I don't want to cut off our legs. That's my only concern on that. And you know, we can put all kinds of stipulations into, you know, what we would require for a person coming through the center. But I think the wider we embrace, the more, the whole point is to get people legal, to get them. And I think that probably what you're going to see from the federal government, it looks like they're going to do it piecemeal, but they're going to do something. I think what you're going to do, what you're going to see from the federal government is some kind of stipulation that if you do X, then we will allow you, no matter what your status is, to go on that pathway. We don't know what that's going to look like. I just don't, you know, Commissioner Bowers, I don't want us to cut off our opportunity. That's my only concern with that. But the other part of it, I have no problem because Mike has already assured you, he's not going to come back with his hat in hand because he already gets money from you. I'm sorry.
That's your question. Okay. Commissioner Haynes did answer your question. Yes, sorry. Long roundabout. Commissioner Roach?
Real quick, the one I want, thank you. She and I kind of worked on this. It probably still needs more work, but it was sort of a compromise based on Commissioner Bowers' position and mine that we had talked about at the last meeting and then the position that you guys had. I think perhaps it might not flow as well as it should, but I think our intent was, is that if there were changes at the federal level...
Exactly.
Then the city commission was endorsing a process that would, that would give a leg up for us to get grants, period. As far as the word "supports," you know, I think it might make, I'm fine with what you, with going along with just what you said, Commissioner Bowers, because I think that makes sense. But you also might, it might be better to just strike "and supports" and just put "encourages," and that might just eliminate the problem altogether and make it cleaner, and you wouldn't need the parentheses. But... altogether and make it cleaner, and you wouldn't need the parentheses. But, and then as far as the "legal," I have that same concern. The problem is, the process is so convoluted up there that we don't know what in the world you're going to call this animal, because the Senate position is 12 to 13 years to, for the current people that are here illegally to then become legal. That's how long the path to citizenship lasts. So obviously, they're not going to be over there at that citizenship center for 13 years studying. I don't know what that's going to mean. And then the House, looks like they want to do it piecemeal. So really, we don't know what. And so we tried to strike the language that was political, and we struck most all of it. And you happened to hit the two that are still in there. And you're exactly right, so...
It's just, the only concerns I've gotten from the public are legal versus illegal. And I certainly don't want to be making, you know, Congress's decision. I'm elected to serve the citizens of Frankfurt, and because I'm elected to serve the citizens of Frankfurt, I need to take their concerns seriously. And, you know, it's a very controversial issue at the federal level. Therefore, I kind of think this is jumping the gun, going a little bit ahead of what we should be doing. I know, at Thornhill, we can already do everything that is spelled out, although not in detail in here, can already be done. So it looks like what we're wanting is an endorsement from a local government to give the federal government support to go ahead and do whatever it's going to do. And I'm asking the federal government to stand up and do its job, and then let the local governments do theirs. It just seems like they don't have the courage to do what they need to do, so that the little people do it for them. And I think it's all backwards. And I think we, the American people, need to realize that we need to hold them accountable for their job and the local officials for ours. Having said that, I really don't have a problem with Thornhill doing any of this. It's just I wonder why the federal government doesn't do its job, you know, and has us do it for it. I just, the legal versus illegal is what...
We shouldn't be surprised by that.
I know. So this whole thing would be a path to legal, to legal. So you think that...
It would afford us an opportunity to apply for grant monies, showing that the community is supportive of the concept of a pathway to citizenship. That's all it is. And like Robert, like Commissioner Roach said, we tried to steer clear of all the political stuff so that it could just be a very pure educational process for whomever wants to walk through those doors. We don't ask whether they're legal or not.
Okay.
We educate. So I hope that answers your question.
I mean, I think what I'm, the way I'm understanding it is, they actually would be legal immigrants if the federal government does...
They would be in some kind of process.
They would become legal if the pathway is set. And so I want the, well, you don't know for sure then...
I don't know if it'll be termed that. I don't know if it'll be termed that. You know, and nobody knows that. So you're, you know, right. So, thank you.
Any other questions?
One. It is a mess. It just seems like here in Frankfurt, we are making decisions that should be made in Washington, and I'd like to have that salary for making those decisions.
Run for that office.
No, thank you. So everybody's, I'm okay with what Commissioner Roach recommended as well, is just striking "and supports," but I think you've got a second on the other way, so I'm okay with that either way.
We can back it out if you all want.
What are you going to back it out?
Sports clean.
To just strike it? Okay, well, if somebody withdraws their second, I'll withdraw my first, or my motion.
Just a second.
I'll withdraw it.
And I'll withdraw my motion.
We'll start over.
So now I move that we just strike the word "and supports." And can I just clarify? Thornhill can already do this. They can do everything in here. But by passing a resolution, it will allow them to go for federal grants.
If they have.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Haines. Any further discussion or questions? No, clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
Commissioner Haines?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Hedin?
Yes.
Mayor may.
Yes, resolution is adopted.
And can we just say, thank you, Ms. Pettis did all the work on this. I guess with Mike Rosenstein, but brought it to us, so. Came from the community, and I'm always happy when the community gets involved, even if I don't always, like, agree right at front 100 percent. It's good to know people are actively involved in trying to make government better, so thank you.
I kind of want to pass over this one. And I want to thank the commission, because I think at one point, every commissioner made a motion or a second on that, on that one resolution.
Wow.
Okay, 6.2 is adopted. The next, 6.3 was, is a resolution that was added after the work session, and it's dealing with a local option sales tax. I know there's some concerns that commissioners and some of us have, that this wasn't on, that discussed at a work session before it was put on the regular agenda, so there may be... Go ahead.
I think that we, I remember discussing it in some work session at some point way back the line, and, because I remember commenting that, I had gone to League of Cities back in the fall and heard, went to one of the workshops where they talked about this local option sales tax, and having been used to do recreational facilities around the country in some places. And so I actually went back home and did a little bit of research, and that facility that keeps the aquatic, what did you call it? What did they call it? Well, this, this Swim Play Frankfurt could actually, I'm thinking, be something that we could apply something like this to, because that's been done in different cities in the country. So we did have a little conversation about it, because I remember bringing that up.
Commissioner Roach?
I think we did have a brief one. I would, I would ask that we move this to the work session so that we can have a, so I'm not, a longer discussion. It does have some compelling arguments, which is, it does allow you to fund specific projects. You can utilize a sales tax, which is, I think, a much fairer tax than others. But there's also compelling arguments against, you know, will it depress economic activity? Will it harm current businesses? You know, all the things. So I think it's something that requires a little more than getting into it before work session. So I'd ask that we put it on the Mar, wait, February work session.
Aren't we though, tonight, if we were to do vote with this, we're asking the legislature to support this. And then it would be left up to the cities to determine if we want to do that. So then at that point, if it were to pass, then we could determine, do we want to do this? If we do want to do this, do we want to do a 1%, a half a percent? You know, then we would have flexibility for more lengthy discussions then. But I mean, we can wait, but I think there's still opportunity to not implement it, or implement it, or implement it any kind of way we did, well, there's not any kind of way, there are limits. But I'm okay with postponing it, but I'm also okay with going ahead and going for this, and then having more lengthy discussion in the work session as to how we want to work with it, should it pass.
Does anyone object if we put this on the February work session?
Yes.
You do object? Okay. Commissioner Haines?
I want to move ahead with it.
Oh, move ahead, I'm sorry, okay.
If anything, we can always discuss it later, but the legislator's only here for a short amount of time.
That's true.
And at the end of the day, it's not up to this commission to vote for this. It's up to the citizens out here to vote for this, if it does pass. So we can discuss this for several months. But our men and women up the street aren't here much longer. So I say that we go ahead and vote on this.
I say that let's move on it.
Okay, well, how do you feel?
It sounds like we're ready to move forward on it, since I see that it would take a citizen vote.
Okay. And just so everyone knows, all this, this is a resolution that is going to support, or not support, well, the resolution is worded to support encouraging the Kentucky General Assembly to pass this type of legislation during the 2014 regular session. It would be an amendment to Section 181 of the Kentucky Constitution, and this would be part of, like, a tax reform package that could be, or will be, proposed or not proposed in this session in some way. And it would permit the local government to levy the tax, and it would have to be worded in such a way, it would have to be for a specific purpose. And this will be decided, if passed by the General Assembly, it would have to be passed at the November 2014 general election as a constitutional amendment. So this, in no way says that anyone who votes for this is for a sales tax, or anyone's against it, is not against a sales tax. It's just to put this matter on the ballot as a constitutional amendment. So if, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the resolution.
Second it.
Move back Commissioner Bowers, second by Commissioner Haines. Any further discussion or comments? Okay. All right, clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Roach?
I don't really know, so I'll vote no.
Mr. Haines?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Hedin?
This, this item has been discussed for several years, so let's go ahead and pass it to the, to the legislator, and let's let them discuss it. Yes.
Mayor may.
Okay, I'll vote yes. I'll explain that. I don't, I don't mind that this be put on as a constitutional amendment, and the citizens can decide if they...
Right, exactly.
Okay, so resolution is adopted. Next item would be consent items. So at this time, I'll ask the city manager to read the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 7.1 is authorize sewer extension contract with OBP LLC to provide a sanitary sewer extension and connection for 600,000 square foot warehouse located at the Jim Dean Distillery at 1505 Leestown Road. Item 7.2 is an agreement with HealthSmart to provide third-party Cobra administration for the city's health, vision, dental, and flex spending account and HRA account. Item 7.3 is authorize transportation grant agreement contract extension through September 30, 2014, for the transit wash bay. The original date was December 31, 2013. Item 7.4 is enter into a 6% real estate sales agreement with Commonwealth, or Century 21 Commonwealth Real Estate for city property located at 117 and 122 Leonard Wood Drive, and lots 5, 5A, and 5B in the Frankfurt Research Park. Item 7.5 is authorize a $59,989 demolition contract with John Felsfezal Jr. for five properties in accordance with the Property Maintenance Code, Section 109.1. Item 7.6 is authorize a $330 agreement with ASCAP as a license fee for music performances at city events. Item 7.7 authorize an agreement with Wells Fargo Insurance Services to allow access to claims and medical information to assist the city with administrative health services, costs, and structure. There is no cost to this agreement. Item 7.8 is authorize a $400 per month contract with Community Trust Bank to provide lockbox services for the ambulance department. Item 7.9 is personnel action. The first is an appointment of Elizabeth Coyle as a water quality engineer effective January 28, 2014, the resignation of Chris Ford, E911 telecommunicator, and authorized payment of all accrued leave as of January 21, 2014, and the promotion of Vernon Elcorn, Public Works Tech 2 to Public Works Tech 3, effective January 28, 2014.
Okay, you've heard the consent items and personnel actions. Any question? Well, sorry. Since it's consent...
Who's the approval, Mayor?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Haines, second by Commissioner Haines. I'm sorry. I was looking down, because I was thinking, I'm trying to think in my head, since we are, if you just give me a second, since we, we do the consent items differently than 7.9. So can we just, can we do 7.8 by itself, and then do 7.9?
Do 7.8.
Yeah, do 7, I'm sorry.
Do you want to do 7.9 by itself?
Yes, because consent calendar items, well, this is part of the consent calendar. My fault, my fault. I got it.
We're good.
I was thinking in my head, that's why I was trying to think. It's all consent.
It's all consent.
It's all consent.
So you're good. Okay, who made the motion again?
Somebody did.
Commissioner Haines made the motion.
I second it.
Commissioner Roach made the second. So all members who are signified, or who said they were here present, will be considered to vote in the firm on the consent items, unless they've filed modifications, file which were known. So the consent items are adopted. Next item is board appointments, and I would ask that we pass over, or just basically remove 8.2. There's no objections?
No objections.
Does, 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 sorry, stuttering. Does he know that he's going to be removed, or does he want to be appointed until such time that he might become a...
Well, I don't know. I just found out at a meeting, commissioners told me, and I don't...
I mean, does he know that he's on here?
I suppose, yes, because submitted a resume to city clerk, and, but I was unaware that the individual filed.
Okay.
Okay, any objections? Okay. Next item would be the appointment of Renee Carter to a three-year term to the Board of Ethics. Do you want to do these separately, or do you want to do them?
Separately.
Separately, okay. So the first one is 8.1.
I move that we accept your recommendation for Renee Carter.
Moved by Commissioner Bowers, second by Commissioner Haines. Any questions? All right, clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
Commissioner Haines?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Hedin?
Yes.
Mayor may.
Yes, thank you. Next item is 8.3 for the reappointment of Walter Hammond to a four-year term to the Frankfurt Housing Authority.
I move we accept your recommendation.
Okay.
Second.
Commissioner Bowers, second by Commissioner Haines. Any questions? All right, clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
Commissioner Haines?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Hedin?
Yes.
Mayor may.
Yes, thank you. Next item is 8.3 for the reappointment of Walter Hammond to a four-year term to the Frankfurt Housing Authority.
I move we accept your recommendation.
Okay.
Second.
Commissioner Bowers, second by Commissioner Haines. Any discussion? Stand on, clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Haines?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Hedin?
Yes.
Mayor may.
Yes, those items are approved. Thank you very much, and we thank these folks for serving. I meant to go back and say, on the resignation, thanks to Chris Ford for his service, and we appreciate his service also in the National Guard. And welcome Elizabeth Coyle, as water quality engineer, and congratulations to Mr. Elcorn for his promotion, on behalf of the entire commission. Any old business?
I have three old, two new.
Three old, two new.
Does anyone else have anything?
We'll do your old first.
Yeah, great. Under old business, we get an update every week from our city manager. And with this, last week, he was asking to make sure that we could come together for a date, to set by the commission, for two items, which would be a business forum inviting businesses together, and the second one would be for setting up for a joint recreational meeting for a recreational facility.
Okay, good. You want to announce it?
If...
February 3rd?
February 3rd, for...
Is that okay? Is that what you were going to announce?
At 2:00?
This, the city...
Under old business, we get a update every week from our City Manager, and with this, last week, he was asking to make sure that we could come together for a date to set by the commission for two items, which would be a business forum inviting businesses together, and the second one would be for setting up for a joint recreational meeting for a recreational facility.
Okay, good, you want to announce it? February 3rd?
February 3rd, for...
Is that, is that what you were going to announce?
The 2 o'clock?
The City Manager gave me this note to announce at the end, but...
That's a different thing.
That's a different meeting, that's our joint meeting with the Stormwater.
Well, he's got that...
That's the one...
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. I'm having trouble reading.
Which I think while we're there, I think it'd be great if we could at least just talk with the county at that point in time regarding if they have any interest to move this item forward.
Maybe we could get the date there.
And we can just ask them at that time, would you be willing to work with the city and other people, entities, businesses about an indoor recreational facility?
Okay, no, is there no objection?
No, it's a good idea, we can get the date then.
Then just ask them if we can just add that item.
Sure.
Great, that one was easy.
So we'll get that added.
And then the second would be the date for a business forum, I don't know what everyone's calendars look like coming up, if we want to...
Well, I guess Commissioner Haines, I'd want to know what City Manager, I know he had some steps he wanted to take before that, how long will those steps take in order to then have the meeting?
Great.
I would think we have a meeting tomorrow morning with our staff, the relevant staff, and I would say we'll be prepared within a week or two with some of the ideas that, we're just looking at our process right now, and looking to see what streamlines we can provide. Couple of weeks, tops.
Great, and then we'll, we can just set a date after that.
Okay, no objection?
No objection from there. My third item, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's, that was easy too.
My third item would just ask staff if we could, all the commission could get a copy of the St. Clair Parking Garage Contract, so that we could all read over it and have a copy of it, so we could see what the wording is. I asked for a copy today, I just figured we all should have a copy.
That's a good idea.
Right, that's my old business.
Do you want that electronically, or paper?
I'm good with electronic.
Paper.
How about get electronically?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Whatever's easiest.
Do you agree with electronic?
Yeah, that's good.
Wow. She's moving on.
Moving on, moving on, just electronic, girl.
And you can always reference it, you'll always have it in your...
That's right.
Does anyone else have old business before we move on?
I'm sure I did.
Great.
I got a couple. The, I guess the thing with the old Y, and the county, and the court date, and having the wrong notice to the wrong party, and is it possible just to go ahead and tear it down without going through the court system since of giving the violations they've had, et cetera?
Mr. Mueller and I are meeting tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM to discuss process.
Well, I was hoping you were going to say that. Thank you. My second one is on emergency management, the, I, I got the thing from, from City Manager on his update about getting together on, starting that process again on the interlocal agreement, and I guess my, I was just wanting to see where everybody was as far as, I think we kind of need to move that pretty quick, so that we can have something in place prior to the new fiscal year starting July 1, if, if, if that makes sense to everybody, and the other thing is, the, I guess the question becomes then, the, I, I just emailed you all, I don't know what everybody thinks because of the, you know, the parameters, since they've not been involved in this really to any extent, how all that's going to play out, but anyway, the budget's due on the 1st of March, but I assume that we could have some latitude in maybe having somewhat tentative numbers based on if you don't have your interlocal agreement. My guess is you really don't know what the budget's going to be. If that makes sense, it may be exactly what we, what you guys come up with, or it may change, so that was something I thought we'd want to make sure, and then...
Probably budget figures.
Right, that, I think it makes sense, then Commissioner Haynes was talking to me about what we had projected for 2014, which was, I think, like 293,000, but I, I don't, I think it's going to be a whole lot less than that, because we don't have to make those vehicle purchases, so I suspect the budgets, the budget number's going to be more like 100 less than that, or much more, I don't know, but I guess I just want to point out that, A, I sent some parameters, B, we better get a move on, on that, and C, I don't think the budget numbers we got on November 5th, I think it's going to be a lot less than that. And last, the, now that we've gotten the realtors for trying to sell those properties, what is the, what do we need to do to try to sell, or auction, or get rid of those smaller tracts?
A list of the pieces of property needs to be identified, I think Mr. Mueller is ma, or maybe Mr. Bradley already has that list, and then certain information needs to be provided to the commission indicating how the city, this is all statutory process, how the city obtained those properties, why they were obtained, and why the decision is being made to sell them, and then once that information has been provided to the commission, at that point, the property needs to, if it's identified for economic development purposes, then you can work immediately with, with a Realtor, or Realtor, or private parties to try and sell the properties, that's if it's being used for economic development purposes. If it's being transferred to another governmental agency, then you can immediately transfer them, otherwise, the properties need to be sold either, attempt to be sold either through the auction process, the sealed bid process, or the electronic auction process. If the properties are not purchased at that time, then the city can move forward to employ a Realtor to sell them as a typical residential sale would occur, where someone would make an offer on the property, and then the offer would be brought to the City Commission, and a decision be made on whether or not to accept the offer. Generally, we use the sealed bid process, but because there are going to be a number of different properties, and if the city wants to get rid of them, all in one fell swoop, an auction may be the best way, because generally, an auction, you sell them. Now, you all, the city may wish to implement a reserve below which the bid would not be accepted, but that's the general process for selling those properties.
Thanks, Mr. Moore, the, I, I think the, the step that wouldn't commit any of us to anything would be to get all of those things in order the way they need to be, and then bring the list to us, and the possible mechanisms for sale, and then the, we as a body could determine whether or not we want to do it. I think from looking at those tracts and those pieces, most of them have limited to no value, and that, and that basically we're maintaining them, but I don't think there'll be a long line of people wanting to buy them. So, I think we just need to get the list and get rid of them, let somebody else take over the repair and maintenance, and maybe they can do something with them. That's all old business out there, thank you.
Can I ask, Mr. Moore, you and Mr. Mueller are going to be meeting tomorrow in the old Y?
Yes, ma'am.
Is the property owner going to, is the property owner aware?
We're not, we're just talking about different processes that may or may not apply, so we are not meeting with the property owner at this time.
Just don't want to bulldoze it down tomorrow. No, we won't, but I know that that person has attended, or had people attend meetings, is very concerned about what's going to happen with that, so I just don't want to leave anybody in the dark.
Certainly, the City Commission would be the entity that makes the decision on what to do with the property.
Right.
Mr. Mueller and I are probably not going to make that decision.
I just know that that person has said that that person has been left out of some of the conversation, and has not known what the steps are, so I want to make sure we're keeping that person abreast of everything that's happening along the way, if that's okay. And if whatever your last meeting is, maybe you don't need that person there, and I'm sure that it'll come back to us before we do anything, but...
Right, perhaps the owner could be informed when that information would be provided to the City Commission, and then would be invited to attend.
Thank you.
I think Commissioner, he's, he's, he's been made aware of a number of times he's been fined, I think, incited, and the problem has been, he hasn't taken care of the citation.
Okay, I just want to...
I think, now, you could ask Gary, he could answer that better than I could, but I think that's, that, that we've cited him, and that they don't pay attention to it.
Is the concern that if it goes back to court, that it'll just be dragged out longer? Is that the concern?
Well, that's mine.
Okay.
Can't speak for anybody else.
Sometimes you move in haste and you make mistakes, anyway.
Well, this, this place has been in bad shape most of my life.
I used to swim in it when it was in bad shape.
Well, it was in bad shape back then too, but you can look at the, the stuff that Gary gave us about the history since 1986, and basically, nobody's paid any attention to the stuff we've given them, whether, regardless of who the owner was. Sorry, that's enough of...
No, no, that's okay, I was just, it'll come back to us, I'm sure. Okay.
Any other old business to you? New business, Commissioner Haines?
Yes. I guess, also, we were told today that Louisville Hill was supposed to get closed next week, but there's an email that said Louisville Hill's now going to be closed on February 5th, so for anyone watching who will be traveling Louisville Hill most mornings, as long as weather's permitting, I believe the date will be February 5th that that road will be closed. The second thing under new business I have is with the cold weather that we've been having, there's been, I guess, lots of people who've been very cold, and there's also been lots of animals that have been very cold. Do we have a place set up, do you guys know where we can take animals with the cold weather?
Who wants to answer that question?
Well, I built a house on my front porch two nights ago, and it's not very attractive, but...
Do you have a permit for that?
It will only hold like one stray cat. I hope the stray cat doesn't decide to hang around after the cold weather, yeah, I'm concerned about those stray animals too.
Well, some of them aren't even stray animals, some of them are animals that are owned by people that have kept them outside, which is, it's what they, it's what they are to do. But is there a place, I've been asked by citizens, is there a place that they can take animals that need shelter in this cold weather? They might be outdoor animals that they don't take inside. Is there a place that they can take them? Okay.
But those property owners need to be responsible for that, I just, that's just...
Okay. I just want to give somebody an answer when they keep calling me, and I say, I don't know, I keep trying to get in touch with people, and I'm sorry, I don't know where to take your animal.
Of course, the Humane Society is always an option, but we don't want to inundate them with animals, you know, there's, you know, if a, if a person can't take care of their animals, they do need to give them up, and a city residents would, would turn to the Humane Society for that. We've also gotten a lot of calls from concerned citizens about, about animals that are still tethered, of course, we have a tethering ordinance, and we'll instruct the owners about that, but people who are concerned about their water bowls freezing over, we, we check on those things too, so...
Do we know if there's anywhere, like in Woodford County or Georgetown, that we know?
I don't know.
Okay.
I, I really don't. I would say, I, I can check on that, but I'd say the, the local vets, or the Humane Society, or even our animal control officer, will have some ideas if someone has a question about that, they can give us a call, and we'll, we'll try to help them out.
Okay, thank you.
Set it, Commissioner.
That's it for me.
Thank you. I would just echo on the, on the, talking about the animals, I have received, before I left, I was up to over 2,000 emails from folks asking us, or encouraging the city to enact some type of an emergency ordinance for the cold weather, but unfortunately, there's no place, as the chief said, that they can be taken at this point, and if someone does call, report an animal that's being left in the cold, you know, they can call our Frankfurt Dispatch Center, and then our animal control officer can investigate. Our current ordinance should cover any of that in terms of someone leaving an animal in a unsafe condition, but in terms of what some of the folks want to do, my understanding is they're going to send a copy of, of an ordinance that Lexington has, and then we can share that, but it was over, started Friday morning, I guess about 8:30 AM, I got the first one, and it just, it's gone pretty much nonstop.
They just picked you two, because I haven't gotten...
Oh, did you get some emails to...
No, 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 they picked you guys, I haven't heard anything but...
I didn't get your 2,000. I've gotten...
It's over two, it's just brilliant, so... And I would say, I would love to answer each one of those individually, but since they're just coming in, just constantly, I don't know that I'll have enough time to sit down and keep up with it, but I would say to you, we all take it seriously, and we will address with our current ordinance to see if it is deficient in any way, and then the commission can look and, and make decisions, but if you have information about animals that are being left in unsafe conditions, please call Frankfurt Dispatch at 875-8582. Again, that's 875-8582, and an officer will come and investigate, and if someone is mistreating an animal, that will be, there will be consequences, because our current ordinance does address that particular issue, but in terms of some of the other items that have been sent, I've...
And then there's just the stray situation. It's like it breaks your heart to see the stray animals nowhere to go.
Well, I guess as a former Director for Habitat Humanity, you put that into practice by building that one shelter for that one cat.
It's a temporary shelter, it's temporary with no food.
We appreciate it. I'm not making light of it, I'm just saying, just, thank you.
It's sad, though, when you see them out there, it's just sad. Okay.
Okay, any other new business? If not, let's see, I was supposed to announce that, February 3rd, 1:00 PM at Paul Sawyer Library, to discuss Family Aquatic Center, or to receive a Family Aquatic Center progress report from, I guess from Parks, and then Stormwater...
Mayor, did you say one? I have down two. Did you say one?
It's at 1:00 PM.
It's 1:00 PM, and then Stormwater Utility Discussion at 2:00 PM, and that is with, jointly with Fiscal Court. And I will say too, if anyone, if I have a meeting scheduled with you, I lost my iCloud account due to a, a hardware or software issue on my computer, so I apologize for the next few days, I am trying to reconstruct my calendar, but please forgive me, if, if I do miss a meeting, I'm hoping that I've got everything, but, on my iPhone, but the other things that went to my Outlook are not there, so I apologize if, if that happens. If there's any other business to be dealt with, we can, if not, we entertain a motion.
I make most of the turn, second.
Move by Commissioner, I heard, at the same time again...
She was faster.
Okay, Commissioner Bowers, second by Commissioner Rhodes, and that we do so in honor of Tommy Haynes. All those in favor saying no, I'm saying no? I had those opposed, like so. So you're Tommy Haynes III?
No, he's actually Thomas Haynes. No, he's actually Thomas Haines.